Quiet down up there. We're gonna call the mayor and council meeting to order at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of January 2nd, 2017.
I got them here someplace, but I will move that we approve the January 2nd minutes as submitted.
Yes, and I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dr. Kachew, we unanimously agreed to pay the bills. Which brings us to Chief Adrian Baker and the police report.
The house fills right up when you come in, Chief.
I'm doubling it's chief and audience. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to present the report for December and then I also have the annual report which is just a compilation of the 12 months. So, go over that quickly now if you have any questions or comments. For the month of December, we had 225 hours of administration and that was 13 percent of our time. Our criminal investigations were 128 hours at 7 percent. Our accident investigations were 17 at 1 percent. We had 977 hours of vehicle patrol and that resulted in 56 percent of our time, 221 on foot patrol at 13 percent. Training was 17 hours at 1 percent, court 21 at 1 percent, and our overtime was 70 hours and that was 4 percent of our total. We made 19 adult arrests and that involved 56 separate charges. There were CBS and traffic at 15 each. We had 10 DWI-related, three each for burglary and harassment, two each for FDA telephone misuse, and one each for arson, exploitation, veil duvet, stalking, theft, and trespassing. One juvenile arrest was made with one charge for theft. We had eight Part 1 offenses, we cleared three. We had 13 Part 2 offenses, we cleared 11 and one was cleared by arrest and one was cleared by exception. Our motor vehicle citations were 63 and our warnings were 230. Our red speed was 190, which is pretty low.
Yeah, in fact, that might be a record low, isn't it?
In recent times, I think it is, yes. And we had two CBS.
And the 10 DWIs might be a record high.
Yeah, what's DWI-related, so it's not 10 incidents, it was probably four or five.
Oh, I see, okay.
Breaking down our overtime, our training was 20 percent, our shift coverage was 22, nine for special events, court was 10, and nine for extended investigation. Our ward breakdown, Ward 1 had just a little under 3.5 percent, Ward 2 was 23 percent, Ward 3 was 25, Ward 4 was 26. We had six outside of jurisdiction and 15 percent at CBD. Those are calls that people come to the police department and report to us every year. Our busiest day of the week was Friday, and our busiest time was 10. In summary, a couple of things that happened in December. We retired Canine Henzo, which if somebody recalls is the great big German Shepherd, probably is every bit of 127 pounds, and he is with us for seven years. And it's just physically time for him to retire. He was replaced in December by a dog, Oxen, who's on the cover of the annual report, as we'll get to in a minute. And both Oxen and his refreshed handler, Corporal Walker, went into service in December, so they're active. And that gives us two Canines.
Did the retired dog stay with his handler?
He did, yes, sir. He's teaching the new boy what to do. So, they're both actually getting a little... We weren't sure how that would go, but they're getting along fine.
But he's off our pet bills and...
Yes, sir. He's in retirement, he's a pet now.
Okay.
But I think that was a proper way, place for him to end up. In December, we had a SEJUS audit, that's Criminal Information Justice System, I think that's what their acronym is. And they check like quality control for fingerprints and how we do criminal history and all that kind of stuff. A great advantage to being in the new building is we have the security and the facility to properly house and secure these type things. So, we did very well in that. We had one negative comment, which is that we are required to get our fingerprint cards from time of arrest into that agency within 72 hours. And we just can't manually do it. The solution is something called LiveScan, which you may be familiar with, is basically put your hand on a computer and it reads and then electronically sends a print. So, it's something that we have entertained getting for four years, but it's very expensive. We've looked at grants and we've tried different ways, not been successful yet. So, SEJUS is understanding on that, doesn't mean anything terrible, but that's the only thing that really is out of our control, but that was our one dig that they checked us on. The annual report, like I said, moving on it, it's just a compilation of the 12 months added altogether, which is quite a chore, believe it or not. I added it up and added it up and can't find this and that. I lost a couple of years off my life, but I got it done. So, I'm going back five years. Our calls for service are pretty consistent for the past four years and nothing new with the ward breakdown, it pretty much does about the same as it does month to month. This year's 168. The all the rest are just a little bit more than last year, but pretty consistent. Our juvenile arrests kind of pop up and down, but bear in mind, when you're dealing with a small number, you know, nine to 15, it's almost anecdotal.
Chief, back in 213, you were still counting bank checks as a call for services, is it?
Yeah, yes, sir. And that made me a piece of it, you know.
And they dropped off drastically after that, so...
Yes, sir. And the other four years are pretty consistent, so that's when a change happens. Civil citations, we had 20. Now, we do count minor possession of marijuana as a civil citation, so that's a change of the way things were recorded from 2013. There's our DWIs, so we actually... That's a hard number, so we actually had 11 bodies that were charged with DWI for the year. Our CBS arrests were 10. Our traffic citations are up a little bit, our warnings are up a little bit, but still, you know, pretty consistent. Part 1 crimes are, you know, too awful what they were last year. Part 2 crimes are very close. Our solvability is good. That spike in 2013 was a result of activities of about three or four very determined criminals, if you will. And again, bear in mind that about five or 10 people can really wreak havoc on our numbers when they get gone. What happens is we ultimately catch them and then, you know, things shut down. If you remember a few years ago where we had a lot of break-ins, really was the result of about four or five people that just were going hard at it and we were hard at it to catch them. And once we did, I took care of it. I did break down each of the charges by number, the most common is theft followed by traffic followed by assault. Our juvenile charges, most common was assault followed by NEDOP. Here's the statistics by amount of drugs that the dogs were involved with. The proto-enforcement, we just mentioned that a little bit earlier, the average for the year was 352, so again, that 190 is very low. And I really don't know why, it's just the way it came out. And then lastly, cases and statistics with regard to the Kent County Narcotics Task Force, which we're a part of, and certainly contribute to their statistics. Just in summation for the year, a couple of points of interest. I mentioned when it occurred, but Officer Peel returned to us in July from his active military deployment. He was gone almost a year. We hired our 14th officer, Officer Pisaki, who was with this department, you know, years ago, and he's returned. And that complements us to our strength of 14 officers, so we're very happy that for probably about the last five months, we've been at full staff. And I think that is part of our reason that we have these reasonable crime stats that, you know, are definitely well in check. In November, I mentioned to you that we have regular patrols at the middle school, something that we've started. And I use the term loosely patrols because we're just, you know, going in there, hanging out with the kids and trying to develop good relationships. So, that's going to continue and we're happy to do that. Of significance and something you certainly hear in the news with regard to opioid abuse. In the very end of the summer, I had all our officers trained on the use of Narcan. And since that time, I think we've had 10 incidents where we, the police, have administered Narcan. So, that's pretty significant, really. And I will say, in all those cases, we've had a save, so that's pretty good. This was, in summation, this was the first year that we were in the building for an entire... in the new police building for an entire year. And again, we're very thankful to be there. It's such a much more professional setting, a much more secure setting and safe. And so, we continue to try and tweak it as we're there and, you know, welcome to come and check us out anytime. Thank you very much.
So, I have some questions that I want to look at. Of all this, I looked through all your statistics and your annual report and everything, of any of that, are there any numbers to show that justify the continued use of the cameras in the Calvert Street area?
I can't show you that by this, as far as any direct result of, you know, the cameras contributed to, you know, 13 whatever. But I would certainly tell you that those cameras are an asset overall. And we had a brief discussion about that before.
Yes, we had.
And my hope is that we will, rather than think about eliminating cameras, we will continue to expand that program. Where they are now initially was based on a, something called a Hot Spots Grant, and that was an evaluation of crime statistics and the frequency that it occurred. In the higher statistical areas, there were monies available to put cameras up. And that's an asset. And quite frankly, anywhere in the community, almost the first thing we do when we respond to a crime is, where are the cameras? It's just modern policing now. So, if we could enhance that opportunity throughout the town, that would be great. How it physically works with the system that we have is they have to work in like a line of sight type thing. So, we can't just stick one, you know, one end of the town and stick one at the other. So, we kind of have to leapfrog, if you will, the one camera to the next, to the next. For instance, if we wanted to get from the police station to the bridge at the river, we'd probably need like three or four cameras in between to hop down there. And for a point of reference, a camera is about $4,500 or something like that. That's accounting, so that's just the unit itself. Then we have to have it installed and that has an additional expense.
The thing is, you can't measure deterrents. So, you don't really know how many crimes you're preventing because, believe me, people know where those... The idea of that is if you used to stand out on Morgan Lake Road and watch people flying down that road, they don't do that now because there's a camera out there. So, it does work, so...
Well, that's a great point, Chief. We can't measure what it is determining.
Well, that's the problem with police work. You do a real good job and your numbers go down and people say, "Well, you don't need so many officers because, look, you don't have the numbers."
Yeah, I've said and literally, you know, you hear about kind of police departments increasing in size, increasing in size. I think the chief's job would be to decrease the police department. If you can get your community under control that you only need one police officer, that 'd be great. But it never works that way. But that being said, you know, there's a magic sort of number of deterrents and equipment that we have, and I think you would see measurable results, I would argue, if you did take that stuff away. So, I think it's worthwhile and I would be happy to consider expanding the program.
All right, and that leads to my next comment about that. In your annual report, you show a graph where it has the third ward, the second ward, and the fourth ward having the highest numbers of incidents in the town. And I would hope that there would be a push either to include video surveillance in those areas as well, or look at some other way to take the stigma off of having it just in that one particular area.
I understand. And to your point, basically, that graph's pretty equal, you know, as far as the...
The bar graph.
So, yes, that's an excellent point to justify.
Isn't one of those cameras in the Calvert Street area was actually requested by the residents of that community, that little alleyway?
Alleyway, maybe like what, two years ago or something?
That was like my very first year. It was like four years ago.
Okay, four years ago.
There had been a shooting, a drive-by.
The residents had received just a couple of bullets and literally inside. But that was just a kind of icing on the cake there. But kind of the loitering and hanging out on that dead street, just a little deadened street there, and the neighbors were very vocal about concerns of safety and even just nuisance stuff like crashing and that kind of stuff. And so, to answer their concerns, we had discussions back and forth and the solution was a camera. Literally, one poll at the end. And I will say, the complaints have been much better since then.
Are there areas in the... That's Ward... Which Ward is coming?
Ward 3.
Are there other areas in Wards 2 and 4 where incidents are concentrated where a camera might be?
Well, I think it would be beneficial to have a camera at the plazas, just because...
The shopping center?
Yes, I'm sorry, shopping center, just because of the volume of activity that occurs there.
Is that where a lot of your citations are being given?
That's... A lot of calls for service are there, and I think downtown as well.
Waterfront?
Yeah, yeah. By downtown, I mean like the marina.
I know the marina's had some nighttime incidents.
And if we got, and then, you know, if we got to the marina, then we have everything in between that we can, you know, space.
How much is a good surveillance camera?
I say, it's about $4,500 bucks.
Okay.
Do you still have the one on the corner of High and Kent?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, I remember requesting that years ago, it was put up.
And then it was, it was just a time where it was... They have a life, you know? And so, we didn't...
All right. Minor question, just you look at the trends here and from 2013 to now, or at least through 2017. So, the adult arrests went down, the juvenile arrests went down, the DWI went down, everything went down, but traffic warnings went up. Was there a change in policy or was that related to the cameras, speed cameras?
Well, it has nothing to do with the speed camera as far as our traffic.
Because those, you get a... I get a ticket in the mail, yes.
Yes. So, I mean, it's just aggressive policing. What traffic citations lead to are a plethora of other violations sometimes. We're not making Chester Town a fishing hole. My guys have no directive and it's illegal.
I'm not opposed to it, it just kind of jumped out at me, that was the only trend that went upward jerk.
So, we're not, you know, we're not about writing traffic tickets or warnings, but what we are about is making sure that traffic and our citizens are safe, that people can get to work without, you know, somebody threatening their life, that their children are safe when they cross the streets and all that kind of stuff. So, it is a foundation of policing to have aggressive traffic control.
I've brought this up before. The town does not benefit directly from a citation. The fines go to the state of Maryland.
You go to the general fund.
It's just not... You know, people talk about speed traps and that's how the police department plays for their vacation. Well, it's just not true. I mean, it's just, we don't get any money from that. Okay?
Chief, maybe you could explain to the two new council people what the array of calls for service are? Like if somebody's locked themselves out of a car, it doesn't necessarily mean that you had 78 percent criminal activity in Ward 3, you know?
If I could give some examples of the calls for service, it can be as innocuous as you said, if someone's, you know, there's just a strange person standing in front of my house, which happens to be, you know...
Key's locked in a car.
Key's locked in the car. Someone's... An elderly person is confused and they've talked to him and they don't know where they are. They call the police, you know, all those things. And again, that's why the chief's ward has a fair amount of calls, just because of the volume of people that are in the shop.
I did see where we had a theft of a car, a vehicle theft. That surprised me.
Yes.
That wasn't a repo or anything?
No. Well, that does happen sometimes if you possess...
We get to repos, I know.
Not a lot of it.
All right, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Could you turn that amp off?
I did just...
I think it might get...
Back to where it does make that noise. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the town manager's report, Mr. Belling.
This afternoon, I distributed the bid opening from December 29th for the piers at the marina. Everybody get a copy of that. So, there's good news and bad news. The bad news is we didn't get a lot of bids, the good news is this is about the best bid we could expect. This company's done business with us, they've recently done all the work at the college. They're really the cream of the crop on the East River Shore. It also includes all three piers with the extended tees and all the water and sewer and electric that goes with it. I don't think we're gonna utilize that whole amount now, I think we're gonna work on Pier 3 and Pier 2 or the upriver ones. The extension of the Cannon Street Pier, which is already a wood elevated pier, and a floating field dock, which will move a little bit upriver. It's imminent in the next couple of days that the marina office, the old marina office, will be removed. We've got it completely emptied. And I recommend to the council that they award this bid to Disson and June. Excellent, excellent company with a track record right here. They built the waterfront walkway and the piers down there, the bridge across, they're just really good. So, I'm excited that they were within the budget that we had, actually under what we thought all three piers would cost. They're going out another 70 feet from where you see them now, and they have large tees on the end of them, so there's quite a lot to it.
What's the timing on those?
That contract starts right away. What we'll be doing now, if you've been down in that area, you'll notice that we're taking out the old piers that are coming out, with the exception of the downriver pier. We'll immediately begin dredging that area and building the bulkhead. This will go in, as soon as the bulkhead is there, the piers will go in, so... They may start working on the Cannon Street Pier right away because there'll be nothing really stopping them from working outboard of that upriver. It should be a lot of activity there. We have a short timetable because dredging is supposed to stop by the middle of February, and it's imminent to start. Last year, when the college was dredging at the boathouse, they were granted a slight extension because they were, in all purposes, done. So, I think if we're close to being done with the dredging, which is really important that would be, then we'll be starting in on the piers, extending the piers.
And get out there with all the ice?
The ice is pretty much gone today. I don't know if we'll have another cold snap. Those guys would break through that ice with the dredging operation, but...
I saw, well, we have a crane coming for three days or four days. Is that Benny going or is that coming for a reason?
We had a crane drop the floating piers in, they're there by the ramp, and we got weathered out of finishing that, but they're stabilized there and they'll be put in. So, that's the handicap ramp that goes down and becomes finger piers on the way out to the plaza where the old marina building is right now.
Is one of those floating cranes?
No, the crane, the crane has come and gone. It dropped all the panels carefully. There'll probably be a crane for the new floating piers when they get here. And they'll operate from where the old building is. That area will be cleared out probably by the end of this week.
So, do we need a motion to make that happen?
Need a motion to go ahead and award this bid.
I make a motion to award the dredging bid to Disson and June Corporation.
But it's not dredging, though. It's dock, pure construction.
Okay, I'm confused then.
Yeah, it looks like there's a typo in there. It's piers.
Okay.
Sorry.
The bids for the piers at the Chester Town Marina is an amount of $1,332,417.
Okay.
I second that.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Dr. Kachew, you unanimously approved the bid to Disson and June Corporation for pier construction.
Like the chief, I would say, please come down anytime if you want us to show you the work down there or explain where we are, where we're going. Either me or the mayor or Case will be happy to do that. We've got a lot done, we've got a lot more to do, but it all seems to be falling into place, and I don't want to jinx myself. Commission and committee volunteers, since we have two new council people, we have about 10 or 12 commission or committee members that are technically expired, their terms have expired. I'm sure if we ask them, "Do you want to serve beyond another term?", they have always said yes in the past, but since we have new elected officials, if you know people who want to serve on commissions or committees, we can give you a list of them. And for all the rest of the council, I don't think we're having burnout with our volunteers. They're all excellent, as the mayor said, and the state of the town addressed, they're excellent people, good-hearted, but we need more, if you know, people who said, "I'd really love to be on the planning commission" or "That historic commission really has a lot of appeal to me."
It's pretty rare that someone says that, but it does happen.
It's hard to get on that historic commission.
Will you send out the list?
I will send that. Absolutely.
Are there any, isn't the HTC short one person? And has been for a while?
I should say that there are three or four vacancies also. There's 10 or 12 people serving on expired terms, and I think the charter says that people that are expired continue to serve until they're replaced, like the poor Maric Galena. Can't find anybody else. Might have been Milligan, Galena. So, anyway, we'd love to hear new names or people, there's people who moved here, names I don't even know.
Just a question on the procedures, how does a citizen normally find out when their openings here?
Well, we usually have on our website, we have, you know, we have openings, we don't say specifically, but because people have different things that they want to be on. But I think we have an outreach every once in a while and... expired. I'm sure if we ask them, do you want to serve beyond another term, they have always said yes in the past, but since we have new elected officials, if you know people who want to serve on commissions or committees, we can give you a list of them. And for all the rest of the council, I don't, I don't think we're having burnout with our volunteers. They're all excellent, as the mayor said in the state of the town address, they're excellent people, good-hearted, and, but, but we need more if you know people who said, I'd really love to be on the planning commission, or that historic commission really has a lot of appeal to me. It's pretty rare that someone says that, but it does happen.
It's hard to get on that historic commission.
Will you send out the list?
I will send that. Absolutely.
Are there any, are there, isn't the HTC short one person?
I should say that there are three or four vacancies also. There's 10 or 12 people serving on expired terms. And I think the charter says that people that are expired continue to serve until they're replaced, like the poor Mayor Galena, can't find anybody else. I don't mean Galena, might have been Milligan, Galena. So, anyway, we'd love to hear new names or people, there's people who moved here, names I don't even know.
Just a question on the procedures. How does a citizen normally find out when there are openings here?
Well, we usually have on our website, we have, you know, we have openings, we don't say specifically, but because people have different things that they want to be on. But I think we have an outreach every once in a while, and then we ask them, would you like to serve and what would you like to serve? We do that in-house here. Before we mention a name, we're certain that they would serve.
Okay.
We try not to make it like a, who did you, who, who is it that wants to be on this? So, that's never happened, where we've embarrassed anybody. We did have, with the recreation commission, we did make sure that people had records that were appropriate to work with children. And I think Linda brought that up, that was painful, but it was a good thing to make sure it's out there. There's, I don't think there are any other background.
No, we just asked for a resume and then, but the background check is strictly for the rec commission.
Usually, the names come before us, and then you have a waiting period where, I mean, he'll present a name, and then we don't vote on them until the next meeting.
I was more just thinking that.
Well, there may be somebody, you know, somebody that shouldn't be on the commission.
No, I have no particular individual in mind for any of these positions. It's just reflecting back, from time to time, I would hear that somebody's appointed to it, thinking, I never knew there was an opening.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll get that to you. Jen actually got it for me, so I counted it up. So, we'll get the names of the people who are on there, and I don't, I guess we could put the ones who are on expired terms, but we'd really like to ask, do you want to serve anymore if they're even a slight bit reluctant? You know, every once in a while, people say, well, I've really had enough. And, because you're serving without pay, and you've given up your time to help the town. Speaking of giving up your time to help the town, Case asked me to distribute this notice of a meeting that's going to be held here in two sessions, and one session at the county commissioners. It's called a Better Maryland, it's Maryland Department of State Planning. They're having these sessions to get input from local governments and people, residents and taxpayers. They promise to listen, they want to identify local priorities and identifying informational needs. And the mayor and I were just talking a little bit earlier about the idea of a second span of the Bay Bridge. I'm sure people are, have strong feelings about that, because this has come up in the past and there have been strong feelings about it. So, if you want to air that, the official session is at the county at 6:00 PM. It's right on the thing for you. So, I think it's great that the Department of State Planning would do that. I think Case Demoy will be, I think he's probably been the one who said, let's have it here.
He is.
So, credit to him. So, staff will be in the afternoon, the public will be at night. Both the staff and the public will be here in this building upstairs. So, I think that's a good way to sort of get public opinion about a lot of things. But we definitely have ideas here on the Eastern Shore. The next thing I want to talk about is the courthouse tower. I read in the paper that the Delmar Wi-Fi is on that, and they have a 90-day reprieve on the removal of it. I just want to mention that the town is on it too. Our Wi-Fi, however small it is, is on that tower across the street, and I think the county knows it. We don't have any other options at the present moment, so that 90-day reprieve is good for us. I'm a little disappointed that we haven't heard about, like, hey, this is going to be taken down. At first, they said it was unsafe. I actually took a look at it personally. I was CEO of a Loran station in the South Pacific, where we looked at our tower every week, at the tower, and I think that really was an issue. It does need some repair, but it's not, by no means dangerous. They are determined to remove it, though. So, I don't know what we're really going to do. The mayor and I have been working on trying to upgrade cell service in the area with negotiations with the college and others. But the downtown Wi-Fi is a different thing, and though a lot of people rely on cell service rather than Wi-Fi, so, but I'd like to try to keep that. I don't know how the council feels, I'm just, you know, an appointed person, you guys are elected, so, but that issue is there. Our surveillance system used to be networked out of there, but it's no longer that, so that's good to know. We ended up up there because when all the fiber went in for the county, we were not hotwired with the rest of the fiber. We were, we're on the sailor network with the public library. That's how our downtown Wi-Fi, we think of it as outdoor library in the fountain park, and that's, was gifted to us, so we get free broadband with from the sailor network. And it's relayed from the top of the library to the top of the courthouse. That's how it works. As modest as it is, it is still something. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, I got notice, and I now understand what it is, I got notice from the Hanover Insurance Company that FTS fibers insurance had been canceled as of November 26, 2017. This is insurance for their digging in Chestertown for any damage they might do to underground infrastructure, i.e. water pipes that are under a huge amount of pressure. And now I find out that FTS is not even involved in the program anymore, and that they've actually been replaced. So, I will be asking that the replacement company gives the same level of insurance for property damage and liability when working in Chestertown, if and when working in Chestertown.
Okay. I feel one, and this probably was a question for Bob Sykes, but I noticed that behind the firehouse is a drilling rig there. Is that a monitoring or a drinking?
Well, actually, I'd like to brief anybody who wasn't here. For about two or three years, the Maryland Department of Environment had asked the town to let us use the firehouse property for wells to investigate PCE release, which ostensibly you would think was from the dry cleaners, though they never actually say anything that, like, it comes from there. So, they've also done separate testing there. I was worried about the town, and I said so in public meetings, said, hey, what's our exposure on this? So, you find PCE under the fire company, I mean, we didn't run a dry cleaner, so what's the deal with that? And also, have to say this publicly, that there were four wells on the convenience store property that were closed down that showed high readings of PCE. Also, as part of this, the county parking lot across there will get two monitoring, two sets of monitoring wells. They put them in in triples. There's a short, a medium, and a deep. When that's, in looking for PCE, which apparently sinks to the bottom of the strata, that's how they do it. So, there's three sets of wells over there. Have to say, the operation is very noisy. Mr. Baldwin called today, it was right next to his door, but anyways, it's supposed to be protecting the town well system, which is 300 feet into the Magathie. So, anyway, we reached an agreement with MDE that would hold the town harmless should there be the discovery of PCE there. That's what's going on there. And also working with the fire company really closely to make sure that those wellheads were in pavements, so that it's not bothersome to them, made sure that the people drilling the wells were coordinating with the fire company. But PCE thing has been around since the early 90s, when the, when the MDE first, now there was a spill. And I have to also say that the property owner has been in limbo for a long time about that, you know, that's been measured as recently as November of this year. I have sent a PIA request to MDE to find out the results of that testing across the street, and I will give it to you as soon as I get it, because I'm as concerned as they would be. We're neighbors on several fronts.
Thank you.
Well, that's a good question.
Thank you.
Back to the Wi-Fi. I knew that when Sam was on the council, he had been working with the fiber people about possibly having, and this is kind of above my pay grade, because I'm not, I'm not that guy, but assuming fiber ever makes it to Chestertown, that they would have repeaters maybe on the buildings that somehow used the fiber signal to enhance our Wi-Fi. Is that how you understood that?
Yeah, and I don't know whether that was an FTS initiative or a Think Big initiative. I don't know who masterminded that, so I don't know how it's going to work from here. I know how it works now, and I, and I think our system could be enhanced, but not to the point where 5,000 visitors could use it at tea party, but, but it's still, it's still something. We had to try to stay in the vanguard, because this system was going to be expanded to go down to the waterfront, so we could have Wi-Fi there and at the Marina. So, I don't see that being used now. I would like to have a dialogue with the county about FTS being out of their, out of business with them and what's happening with us. What's their plan for this?
I think the long and short of it is, it would be really, really nice for everybody if the county would get in front of this issue, because I'm starting to get a lot of feedback from our business owners on where's the fiber? Like, everybody thinks it should have happened a year ago, and there's all kinds of rumors about the providers that were hired, and nobody really knows where anything. So, I'm actually meeting on Tuesday. I'll have to look at my email, but I'm working to try to get sort of as much information as I can before I say anything publicly, but it would be nice if I didn't even have to do that. It would be nice if the county could stood up and said, we budgeted $5 million for this, and here's where it stands. Have they done that?
They did it tonight.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, that's a bummer.
It was our commissioner meeting, Scott Boone was there and he made a long presentation.
And what'd they say about Chestertown?
Well, they said Chestertown, they were getting ready to do some stuff out of Quaker Neck. They said that Chestertown would be tricky because of, you know, your wires and stuff like that, but he acted like everything was still a go. The two companies, FTS and whatever, now, he didn't, he didn't use the word financial difficulties, whatever you say, but said some other entity, they gave the name of it, it's something thumpin' LLC. Then they went into a big, the county has now bought a lot of the, I guess, the dark fiber, so, anyhow, but there was a big presentation tonight. I watched it on the computer.
Come on, well, hopefully that will be helpful.
All right, I'm done.
I'll be brief. The mayor's report, I think you all got this letter from Chester Grove. If you didn't, we've been requested, I've been requested to be the grand marshal of the Chester Grove Parade, which is February 10th, Saturday, February 10th, 2018. And you all could either be in the parade, or they would love you to serve as judges. So, the invitation has been put out there. The parade is on, as I said, Saturday, February 10th at 1:00.
It's at 1:00?
It's at 1:00, according to this letter I have here.
Scheduled to volunteer at 1:30 and things, I'm going to get with.
Well, you better make your judging decisions really quick. And scram. And it says the parade should last about half an hour.
I'll be happy to judge, but I don't want to be in it.
So, and the letter came from Mary Simmons, I know many of you know her, so if you see her, you can either accept or deny the invitation, but I will be there. Along the lines of Bill's Bay Bridge crossing, there's another meeting. Hold on here. Yes, I got an invitation, email invitation today from Janet Christiansen Lewis of the Kent Conservation and Preservation Alliance. They will also be having a, basically a public meeting to talk about the Bay crossing study. They're hosting the meeting, and it'll be at the Chestertown Fire Hall on Thursday, January 25th at 6:30. So, they didn't give me a whole lot of details, but it sounds like they're going to basically be presenting what's happening on the state level and then soliciting public comment. And because Chestertown is a big part of Kent County, and if a third crossing comes through here, that would obviously have a huge effect on all of us, I'm going to try to attend that one as well. So, again, it's Thursday, January 25th at 6:30 at the Fire Hall. And that's all I have. So, why don't we get a board report, so why don't we start with you tonight, David?
I attended the comptrollers meeting in Annapolis for all new office holders. Main takeaway from Francho's presentation was he was very concerned about the new federal tax law and the impact it would have on all of us, particularly an incentive for wealthy people to move to other states. But they gave a, I thought, a very good presentation on how they divvy up the funds and the sequence with which these are passed out, but it had this overhang of, hey, this is what it is this year, we don't know what is going to happen coming up. And he was kind of filled with gloom and doom over that.
All right. Linda?
Well, you already talked about Chester Grove. All I have left is the Historical Society and the Tea Party.
I just said, they want us in the parade. All I said was, they wanted us in the parade.
I know, but, well, it's February 2nd, and the Historical Society, the little shop is closed in January, but the library upstairs is open Wednesday through, it's Saturday. The bake sale, Valentine's Day, February 13th and 14th, and the Tea Party Festival Needs Volunteers. There's a festival meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 on the second floor of the visitor's center. And Trish, is the, Kent, who's going to reschedule their open house?
Yeah, we are, we just don't have a date yet.
Okay.
But we will, I'll let you know.
Everything was just, everything was canceled Friday night, you know, we were ready to go and.
It was cold.
And getting the emails, everything was canceled. Other than that, the farmer's market is open on Saturday morning.
Those guys are hardcore.
They're intrepid.
Those are hardcore people.
You owe me one, because I'm not going to mention that.
I didn't think you had your ears in.
The water's frozen at Dog Park. Thank you, Linda. It's my turn.
I've been in contact with Mr. Demoy about taking a look at the grant proposal for the park work they're going to do out in Washington Park, so I'm hoping to hear from him soon. I'll be making my request to the businesses in the Third Ward. Part of one of my initiatives as a council member was to start a Third Ward Business Council, much like the Downtown Association, so they can get some attention for the work that they do out there. So, I'll be moving forward on that. I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Janie Barrett, who stepped up to the plate on a late night, young man across the street from her house was, had OD'd on heroin, and she had taken the Narcan training that Tim Dove had given at her son's barber shop. And she was prepared. She got in there, administered the Narcan, and saved a life, so we're going to give a shout out to her for that work. I want to draw some attention to the Seed House. If you all haven't been down there, go get a cup of coffee at the Seed House. That's, I guess, is that a plug? Can I do that?
Why not?
It's out there, man. Go down to the Seed House. I had some coffee there, they got this killer oatmeal, it looks like it's handmade or whatever it is, but go check that place out. And I just want to say, I'm getting around in these first two weeks as a council member, have been wonderful.
That's great. That's awesome. All right.
Your turn.
Word four.
Yeah, I think they're great in four. Anybody that's been up to the shopping center and looked at the steel going up on KRM's on the building, it almost looks like a bridge or something like that.
It's not small.
It's going to be humongous, and it's really a great asset. That building, and then our little building on a smaller scale down at the waterfront, is moving right along. I went down there today and they got some sides on it. So, I'm, you weren't here today, I was going to mention that. When I signed those checks to those elevator people, I thought, look how much money we're saving just by the fact that we don't have.
No doubt.
I can't believe, like, every month, the elevator people want a few hundred dollars for coming in here and riding up and down on our elevator and signing off for it. Over the years, it's going to be a great asset, but otherwise, everything is fine in four, although I don't like leading that statistic, 26% of the calls, but I agree with the chief, a lot of them are needless calls or minor calls and not necessarily crimes. And that's it from four?
All right. There were no requests from the republic tonight to be on the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from our massive audience?
I can introduce the audience, there's Ernie, Ernie Mayer. He's our Bluebird King.
Not back yet. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second pick. All's in favor? Any opposed? unanimously adjourned, Jen.
All right, thank you so much.